Do we call this meeting to order, please? This is a Plymouth Town Council's last quarter finance special joint meeting. Wednesday, April 8th, 6:30. We are in the community room. Exit, item two is fire exit notification. We go out the back, two doors. We take a left into the hallway, out the door, and you're in the parking lot. Item three, the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, the next item on the agenda is public comment. I don't know if anybody has anything that they want to add right now. What I thought I would do here is, we only have one item on the agenda tonight, which is item five, discuss and take action on the presentation of the following projects for consideration of a bond package. And then we were going to go through each and every item. And again, this is a presentation for the town council and for the Board of Finance, so we're not going to take public questions on each individual item here, which is all part of this one number five. But what we'll do is at the end of this, once we have all the presentations, then we'll stop and we'll take any public comments that we might have. And, you know, remember, the goal here is to, you know, if this, if this, I guess our goal tonight would be to make the presentations of this bond package and talk about it a little bit, then the town council, at that point, would take a vote to send this package to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance, if all goes well, will convene and also vote on this package, which would send it, if they voted in affirmative, then it would send it back to the town council, who would set a date for a public hearing. And the public hearing would be in a couple of weeks. And the day of the public hearing, that's the day that we would, again, do this and do the entire presentations again for the public, and then on that day, you'd be able to ask all the questions you want, individual on individual items. And then after that public hearing, then the council would set a date, if they so choose, to send this to a referendum. And, you know, one of the, one of our thoughts is to have this, have this on the same referendum as the budget, the budget, that is a second question. So that's a, that's a pretty good possibility, if we can get everything through and discussed and get this thing so that everybody votes in favor. So that's kind of our goal tonight, to present this package one at a time. We do have presenters here tonight that will be, you know, going through each line item. One of the things that we were very aware of when we put this package together, and Anne Marie is here and she's going to, will give a presentation at the end, but I want everybody to know going into this that, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of items in here that are going to be reimbursed. So we're not looking to do a bond for all of this money. What we're probably going to do is do a, like an anticipation note, where we would just pay interest, probably for eighteen months or so, until all these projects are done and we've had time to recoup our money from the state before we want to send this thing off to a, off to a bond. And, you know, one of the things, again, that we're very cognizant of is the debt service line item in the budget. And Anne Marie will show you in her graph here a little later, that this package that we have here will keep that debt service line item right where it is. So by doing that, that's not going to have a big, have a big or any effect on our mill rate, because that's the, that's the number we have built in. Okay, so that's basically our goals for tonight. That's a little bit about the projects. So with that, without wasting any more time here, we'll get on and take one project at a time. The, well, does anybody have any public comment they want to make before we start? Because we can do it at the end, once we get, once we, once we, once you hear where all the projects are. Okay. A, this is going to be the first project here. This is the, this is the Safe Roots to School project. And I'll just give you a quick overview on this before Charlie gives you the details on it. The Safe Roots to School project is a sidewalk project that's going to start at the corner of Maple Street and Main Street. The sidewalks will run up Maple Street, will cross over North Main Street onto Eli Terry. They will run around the Eli Terry Building, down where the outfield fence is at the old, at where Eli Terry. And then it will hook up with Charles Street, go over to Highland Avenue, and then up to Fisher School. So the goal of this thing, the purpose of this thing, is to, obviously, safe routes to school, so kids could actually walk from Main Street to Eli Terry, Eli Terry, all the way up to Fisher, and vice versa, and remain on sidewalks all the way. And this particular project is a, is a $430,000 estimated project, and we will be getting reimbursed $430,000. It is fully reimbursable. And the reason that we have to borrow money or bond money for projects like this is that we don't get that $430,000 back until we actually do the project. We have to complete the project, spend the money on the project, and then submit the paperwork to get the money back. So it's, it is not going to be any cost to the town, but we do have to, have to front the money. So that's a little overview. And with that, Charlie, do you want to explain the logistics of this project, or are you here? Do you want to, do you want to go through each one, do an overview, or do you want me to just, because I got set up to do a little mall one after another. Want me to just do one? Do you guys think we should just do one at a time? Is that what you want to do, or you don't want to do that?
Okay, but my order is different. It's on here.
Just want you to see the fine stick. All right, well, then I'll run down through the projects, and then you just want to take the floor and run through them in your, in your order. Is that what you want to do?
Sure.
Okay. The, the second project is the Fall Mountain Water Paving Project, and Charlie will explain to you, this is kind of the final piece of all of the, of the water project that we did up there. This is a paving project, and this is the last area up in the Fall Mountain area that needs to be, needs to be completed. And again, this is a $690,000 project, and we will be getting reimbursed $650,000. So the cost of the town is only $40,000 for that particular project. The next project on the line here is going to be the Eli Terry Rear Access. And I want to talk about this a little bit in conjunction with Safe Roots to School. Actually, Charlie, we need to do these things, but we have other people that are going to do some of this presenting here, so why don't we do them one at a time? Why don't you do, Charlie, are you with me? Why don't you do Safe Roots to School first, and then we'll, and then we'll just kind of go up. Can you work through your areas and do that?
I can do whatever you want.
All right, let's, let's do Safe Roots to School. And you know what, it's, you know, while we're on Safe Roots to School, let's kind of, maybe we can, we can work in conjunction with number three, which is the Eli Terry Rear Access. And I want the Board of Education to talk about that, and talk about, you know, their needs for that. We've met here a few times with the Board of Educations, with the bus company, with the principals of the schools over at Eli Terry, and there's a major need for separating the buses that pick all the kids up in the afternoon, and the parents that pick kids up in the afternoon, and the walkers, because it's kind of a, a major mess out there in the afternoon, and it's one of those things, it's an accident waiting to happen. And by doing this rear access to Eli Terry, then we'll be able to separate the people picking up kids and the buses, which is going to be a huge safety thing. And I, and I mention that because, remember, a minute ago, I talked about the Safe Roots to School, and Charlie will show you both of these projects here. The Safe Roots to School right now, it's planned on going right straight across the baseball field to join onto Charles Street. But by putting this side, by putting this, this, this back driveway into the back of the school, you'll be able to see that we'll be able to keep the sidewalk so it looks nice and neat right along, right alongside of that road. So with that, Charlie, why don't you do those two projects, or start those two projects, or maybe what we should do is hear from the Board of Ed first. How about that? And then do the.
I, I don't.
How do you want to do it?
I, I know that the town council has seen the Safe Roots to School thing recently. I don't remember when the Board of Finance, when it went to there, if the Board of Finance has seen the project specifically and in detail. Like the mayor said, it essentially is a sidewalk expansion and rehab connecting both Eli Terry and Harry Fisher, and also bringing them down to north, or down to Main Street. That is one of the higher trafficked pedestrian routes in the town.
Do you want me to talk without the mic?
Well, that's worse, I think.
All right, I got you. I'd like to stand up so I can, not everyone's not looking at my back. It's a sidewalk expansion program. It connects the two schools, the middle school, the elementary school, to Route Six. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic coming from, in particular, the Allen Street area, the Beach Avenue area. There's a lot of kids that walk that route every day. It's, it is based on a study that we did back in 2009, where we counted the heads of the people actually walking, and that's when we decided it was best to do it. This is the area that it's going to be. This is in front of Eli Terry, looking into the school. This is like the mayor said, this is where the Charles Street extension, rear access to the school, whatever you want to call it, is going to be. As it is right now, the sidewalk itself is going to come right through here, on the back of the, the back of the curb, and then it's going to go through this gate right here, right here. The plan is to have the sidewalk, so it comes, the foul post is right here, pretty much, and it's going to, it's going to stay outside of the field of play. It's going to come up towards the fence, go along the inside of the fence, towards number eight, Charles Street. We'll cross the fence and go back out and follow Charles Street, which is not an ideal way to have the sidewalk. It's really the only way to do it right now. The better way to do it would be to do what we want to do with the Charles Street extension, so that we can fix two problems at once. It's the best way to pave for the future and the best in the future here. Now, I got to bounce around to get to the plan for the Charles Street thing, but the section we would have is this house that you see right here in the distance, this white house, that, the robe would be coming right through there, and it would be coming out just about where this white car is right here. It would be coming from that white house, be coming in here like this. It's a little bit easier to visualize via the pictures than the plan. I understand plans well, but I understand not everybody does. So I'm going to have to bump around quite a bit to get to the plan. We'll get back to all this stuff. You're not, you're not missing too much. All right. This is what the plan looks like. Like, it's kind of hard to see on paper, but essentially, you're going to have, Charles Street will still, will still be essentially at that end. You're going to have cars that will be coming in car, on Charles Street, and will be going through this little lollipop, the cul-de-sac, if you will, and will be going back out Charles Street. This will separate the pedestrian and the drop-off traffic from the bus traffic. The buses, right now, will be going to the front of school, continue to go to the front of school. We looked at a lot of different options, the best way to do that, including having the buses going through the school. Working with the administrators at Eli Terry, we decided the best way to do it, the most efficient way to do it was to have the kids get dropped off at this location in the morning, as they can, and then in the afternoon, when they're getting picked up, there's areas for on-street parking, right in here, for some cars to queue up. And also, all the way through here, there is room for cars to queue up, to pick up the kids. The kids will be waiting in the cafeteria, the gym, or whatever, the little areas down there. When the parents come, and when the school gets out, then they'll be released. That's part of a statewide incentive and a program that I think Governor Loy has pushed to separate the, and the bus traffic from the pedestrian traffic. I think that's because of what happened at Ram. I don't know if there was going on before that as well, but at the Ram Middle School, I think it was a middle school or high school ram, where that, where we got hit there. High school? Yeah. Ever since then, it's been a big push to separate the buses, where you really don't have good sightline around them. The way it is now, kids are just running through around the buses, and it's really not a safe situation. We did have a couple of occurrences where kids have gotten hit not too long ago. So it is, it is a problem, and it's always been a problem, congestion, even when it was a high school. This would allow for the, that track to go through there. Now, this, this would all just be line striping, would just be the parking lot. There's not going to be any raised curb in the middle there, so we can still clear snow as best as possible. There is going to be a gate blocking access to the school during that drop-off and pickup times. Part of the program for this is to have staff from the school open and close that gate as needed during the day, so that unwanted people are not to use it during the day. As I said before, this is where the sidewalk would be going, according to plan currently. It'd be coming right up through here, going down the inside of this fence, and is in, it's in the fence area of the field, although not in the area of the field, like the foul post is just right here, but it still will be within the fence line. The new plan, if we get, if this gets approved, would bring, to bring the walk outside of the fence, and it would be against the curb line where the on-street parallel parking would be. Does the mic, Mike has anything else to say? Or Mr. Sandler, I don't know if anyone wants to.
I just have a few, I just have a few notes. I think, basically, first, we'd like to thank Charlie, and Fire Marshal, and the mayor, and Tony Orsini, and other people that have been working with us for a number of meetings on this proposal. And we really appreciate this collaboration of the government. There's a lot of things that this will accomplish. We have a tremendous problem with traffic flow at that middle school. I have Deb Lewandowski here from the Henske Bus Corporation, and she may want to say a few words on it, but at the close of school, and at the beginning of school, when school starts, buses are coming in, dropping off, and parents are trying to come in, drop off children, and walkers are coming across, and it's a completely congested area, very dangerous, very hazardous. Children are running between, between buses, and as much of staff as we can get out there to try and keep everything orderly, it's a, it's a nightmare, especially at the dismissal time. On rainy days and bad weather, it's even worse. People want to pick up their child, we completely understand that. It's pouring rain, they don't want them to walk, or they have some appointments for them. So this would greatly alleviate that. What we want to do is, as Charlie mentioned, we would release the walkers from the north part of the building at the end of the day, so they wouldn't even come out to the front of the building any longer. They would come out on the north end and go down the sidewalk, either to the right, if they're going to the other side of Route Six, or to the left, or to the, to the left side, along, along Charles Street and up, and connect with Hillside, and go up into that area. We have a lot of kids that, that walk and come down from that area, and it's so much nicer with the job that the town has done in rerating that road. With this, with this five-foot wide sidewalk, it'd be even better. Also, that, as you know, is a middle school, or prior to that, Fisher was a middle school, so a lot of the ball fields, the trap and the baseball fields, the softball fields, are up at that facility. So our, our children coming out of the middle school deal will just go out along the sidewalk and make that walk right up there, and it'll be a much safer area, easier, easier to access, and come right back to the building where they're located. All buses would drop off and pick up where they are in the front of the building now, but we wouldn't have children and walkers running in and out. We wouldn't have parents trying to come in with their cars in the middle and in-between buses, and trying to, trying to get in and out. It would also enable us to have a more regimented and timely basis to get all of our buses in and out of the middle school, do what they have to do, and then get to the two elementary schools on a more timely basis, because we don't, we don't experience that right now. With the way the traffic and parents are cutting in between buses, it could be three, four, five minutes before we get buses out of the parking lot in front, and the congestion backs up from the red light on Main Street. So we think we would eliminate all of that congestion by bringing in parents to the backside. It would be much easier for parents, and much easier for buses, and a heck of a lot of a, a safer situation. So basically, the advantages are, traffic congestion in the front of the building would be greatly reduced. The hazard of children running between buses to reach parental vehicles on North Main Street and Park Street would be eliminated. Right, Fort Myersville, fortunately, the traffic that we saw, when we had a young man that was clipped and ended up with a broken leg, he was launched right over the fence on North Main Street into Park. And the traffic coming down would be greatly reduced on, on North Main Street and that red light. And another major thing for us is, especially at this time of year, where we've had a lot of snow build up, and we all know that's right, but we really don't have any accessibility for our fire and emergency personnel, and especially the big units, the tanker trucks, to get behind that building at all. There's no way to do it. There's no accessibility from the south side, and there's no accessibility from the north side. So this would give the emergency personnel an opportunity to come in through that area in the back, and access the building, where there would be the police and the fire department. Another thing is the transportation would be much better. Oh, yeah, the gate, I just wanted to mention the gate. This, what we're proposing to do with this, put in, is we, we understand that that's a dead-end street, and there's two things. We want to have it maintained to be a dead-end street for the residents there. At the same time, we don't want it to be a racetrack for people cutting through, from Hillside, cutting through our facility, where we have kids coming out on North Main to cut the corner. So what we're proposing is there would be a gate, and our custodial staff or maintenance staff would open up that gate, probably like a half an hour before school starts, to allow parents to come in and drop off in that area. And then when school's in session, we would close the gate, so that it's not being used as a, as a pass-through. We would open it up at the end of the day to facilitate the access from the building. Then every other time, weekends and everything, the gate would be closed. And we think that's in the best interest of the neighborhood, and also the security of the building. And obviously, emergency personnel would have access to keys, like they have to our other facilities. I don't know, Superintendent, do you have anything you want to do?
Could you move the passing guard?
We have, there's a crossing drive, crossing North Main Street, and then farther up, crossing over, I believe, at both sides. I don't know if they would move it. We'd have to work, first of all, control the crossing lines. Do you want to add anything, Marty? Got anything on the buses?
No, other than we've stressed, obviously, it would be separation of the various chaos that's going on. We have a distracted driving problem. We also have a distracted pedestrian problem. Kids come out of school, they're on their cell phones, and raining, their clothes are down, they're not paying attention to the traffic around them. And this is going to focus where it is that they're going, rather than bumping into a bus or an incoming car. It separates, it separates pedestrians from the buses, from the cars that are being picked up, and it just, it's a safe thing to do, it's a smart thing to do.
Thank you. Maybe we should try to use this microphone a little bit, so everybody can hear Charlie. Are we going to talk up there, or bring a mic over there or something?
There was feedback, there was some feedback.
Okay, any, any questions in the Board of Finance or the council? Charlie, or Mike, or anyone?
How wide is Charles Street right now?
Charlie can answer that. How wide is this now? How wide would it be to be done? I haven't measured it since we redid it. It was about 22 feet wide before it was redone. Right now, it's just about the same footprint, so 22 to 24 feet wide would be my best estimate. The proposed portion of the road, the new section that we're talking about, would be 24 feet wide, which is the zoning minimum for, for a road. It would be wider where there's terrible cars.
Can two cars pass on that street right now?
Yeah.
Will anybody's front yards be taken?
We do not plan on taking anyone's property, except for the one at 10 Charles Street, where we reached an agreement with the current property owner, whose property is on the blacklist, and is not really an asset to the town. Something else I'd like to point out, that that property at 10 Charles Street that we would be acquiring is completely surrounded by town-owned property already. It's a, it's an island. There's, there's paper streets and regular streets, and it's school property surrounding that 10 Charles Street, and the 10 Charles Street property.
You said you have no plan to take anybody's front yards.
Yeah, this is a plan, and there's, this is a plan, and there's nothing on this plan to take anybody's yards.
What if you find out that there's too much traffic coming in and going out of there, and you need to have a normal road? Isn't a normal road around 28 feet wide?
24 feet wide is the minimum that zoning allows for a road.
That's not what I asked, Charlie.
The travel lane for typical roads is 12 feet wide. They like to have a two-foot shoulder on the side of the road for water in the gutters whenever rains, and for pedestrians on the side of the road. 24 feet is the minimum safe road width. Certainly, if there are cars parked along the road, where there's not parallel parking, or if there's a crew doing maintenance on the road, and you have to have alternating one-way traffic, those are special situations, and that's not what the road is built for. This road will certainly accommodate two-way traffic, and is 99.9% use.
Could you answer my question, please? What's the normal width of the road's behavior?
It depends on the classification of the road and the use of the road. 84 is a lot wider than in Charles Street.
Charlie, what kind of traffic controls are going to be back there? If these are just painted lines, what's to prevent the parents from just like scattering throughout the parking lot, and just kind of really just cramming up that parking lot back there?
Great question. Then, we didn't, I didn't mention that, it's a great question. We, we had planned on this section over here, it would be cones or some other way to keep cars from going that way, cones or sawhorses or whatever, whatever deemed fit to keep cars from going that way. This way around the school doesn't go anywhere. Nobody's going to go that way. There's just, I think there's an hamster or something there now, so there's nowhere for them to go. But this way will be closed off. The only way in and out would be Charles Street.
I mean, you can't foresee, I mean, because I certainly can, because I, you know, if you deal with cars and drivers enough, you're, you know what they're capable of. That parking lot goes all the way behind us, up until like the gym portion of that school.
Correct. There's, there's signage along the road coming in, and signage along the road coming out, telling the driver what to do with the maneuver.
How do you maintain that? How do you maintain that?
Right, and the training of parents.
Yeah, there's certainly, there's certainly going to be a learning curve. I don't know if there's a plan to send out the foots to the parents of the new thing. We would like to have this operational by the beginning of the school year, this coming fall, so there will certainly be some learning curve, absolutely. Will somebody occasionally go this way, thinking they can get out and have a backup? Probably. Will somebody run over these cones and go that way? Probably.
Okay, and then what's going to, I guess distracted drivers and distracted kids is a great thing to consider when, when you're releasing kids and you've got parents in cars. How do you separate the kids from the cars? Is there, are there going to be people back there monitoring the kids and making sure they're going where they ought to be?
Would you use the microphone?
Okay. Yeah, our administration up.
Could you use the mic?
Is that better? The administration at the middle school has been very The administration at the middle school has been very intimately involved in these plans and they were the ones that suggested they could cone off the other areas so nobody tries to go from west to east. And it's not going to be any different than what we go through at some of the other schools, which is certainly, you know, we, it's, you hate to use the word training, but, you know, the traffic flow, it'll get into a pattern and it won't work immediately the first week, without a doubt. But after that, you know, we certainly plan on having an administrator on each side and we will have staff as part of duty periods, you know, to go out there and monitor the situation and sort of direct people. Same with the high school. You know, after a while, everybody knows you're going to come this way to drop off kids and the buses go this way and, you know, and the students part there at a certain spot. So over time, I'm sure it'll be regimented and it should work quite well. The staff and administration at the middle school are really excited, you know, about the whole opportunity because it's a real nightmare in the mornings and the afternoons.
Charlie, can you turn that down? Would that help you turn the thing down?
Yeah, I'm talking about the receiver.
Charlie, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear that.
Okay. With these figures, the Eli Terry School rear access is $350,000. Is that affirmative here? Do you have a built-in contingency and same as with the Safe Route to school? It says estimated value. Could there possibly be more added cost to the taxpayers?
The safety project, the total amount that we got for the grant was $430,000. That went out to bid. That bid has returned. We got a favorable outcome. We currently have a, I think it's $295,000. Now, out of that $430,000, we really only got $390,000 because the state takes $40,000 just for being involved in the process. So we got, the current construction estimate for the return on that is $295,000. The $350,000 for this road process, there is a retaining wall that's going to have to be put in there along the road portions. That's going to be why it's really kind of expensive to do it. We're looking at just about $100,000 to acquire the property after the demolition's been removed. The property owner's going to do, handle the demolition and we're going to take control of the property after it's all been remediated. That would be about $100,000, which leaves about $250,000 to build the road and do the line traffic. Now, there's not any proposed additional drainage being put in, which gets kind of costly, so there's enough contingency in that number that we're not going to worry about. Charlie, any questions?
Yeah, Charlie, I have. Yeah, I have a question. I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions for you. One, you had spoken about the parking that will be available in the end of the circle for parents to pick up the children. What's your guess on like, I mean, how much room are you going to have as far as vehicle-wise that will be able to come and sit there like they're funded and how they sit on Park Road right now to wait for their child to pick them up? I mean, what are we gaining out of that circle vehicle-wise?
Well, we didn't want to strike individual spots on the circle because it's circle-shaped and it gets kind of funky in a way. It kind of becomes, the spots become a little trapezoidal because they're circular and then you're kind of locked in to those spaces. So with not having the lines, you can actually fit more cars in there. But we planned on adding about 15 parking spots altogether.
So you believe you're going to be able to accommodate more parental vehicles in that space than you would along Park Road?
I'm not saying I can accommodate more, no. I'm just saying that with this design, we're getting about 15. I'm not sure how many cars along Park.
Okay. And then as far as the gate goes, you said this is going to be a manual operated gate, so we will have to have somebody on staff to operate this gate, opening and closing it. It's not going to be a gate that would operate electronically.
No, but it's a great idea.
Did you look into it at all or did anybody?
I just imagined, imagined it costs too much, but we can look into it.
Yeah, okay. And then the coned-off traffic area in the sawhorses, so basically that would be another thing where you would either need a staff person on site to kind of direct the traffic. I mean, I'm sure there's got to be either teachers or somebody that's out in the front of the school now that's kind of doing that job. Is that something that you would need more of or is that something that they would kind of float to the back of the school now with the new arrangement?
I'll, I want to know if there's any very much, I'm not sure how their protocol is currently or if it's changed.
Okay. So, I'm not sure the best place to stand. So, I'm kind of new, obviously, to just how this whole process is being put out, but I'm not new to schools. And so certainly, when you get into a process like this, you have a number of teachers who have duties and administrators who have duties after school to make sure our kids all leave the building safely. So in terms of making sure that they follow the right protocol, we would want to make sure parents were told well in advance, here's the traffic flow, so they get the flyers. We mentioned flyers or leaflets. And then we would have teachers back there and we'd probably do more of a, many more folks out there, especially at first, we were trying to make sure people knew the correct process to follow. And once people started catching them, we could probably back off a little bit. But we'd want to monitor that for a long time to make sure that the safety, all this is being done for safety and also for the traffic piece. So we, there would be no additional staff from what I've been told from Mr. Sanagata in terms of trying to make this work. And I was also, I'm also understanding at this time, we have custodians who are on duty already in the morning who would be opening the gate and closing the gate. Certainly, if an electronic gate was an answer that, but I'm sure someone still needs to push a button even on an electronic gate unless it's got a timer on it, so.
The one, is there, do you have a police officer there now that's on duty during the hours of dismissal and stuff that assists you with the traffic flow problems or?
I wish I could answer. I know we have one at the high school that's there about 90% of the time. I think he spends the remainder of his time going to this middle school, but I don't know if Mike has a... No, there is no police officer per se.
No, okay, all right.
They stop by. They're there. Oh, yeah, they stop by and they choose by their, my wife's got her window knocked out.
I just, it's just advisory.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The other question, council? Good?
Yes.
Please forgive my ignorance. Charlie, you said that you went out to bid on the Safe Route to school, is that correct?
That's correct.
Does that normally come before going out to bid? Does that normally happen before the town, whoever decides to do something? Or would that normally come after the town has voted to approve whatever it is? I just don't know the procedure. Do we just put the cart before the horse?
The town has voted to do this process going back to, I think, 2009 when it was first broached. Most recently, it was the end of last year sometime when I went to council to talk about it. What never happened and what we're trying to accomplish tonight is money appropriated for the project. There was never any money set aside or lodged in for the project. Because it's reimbursed project, it's just if it fell through the cracks or whatever happens, it just, there was never money appropriated for the project.
But there is no work that's going to be done, started or anything else until this thing is done. If this thing, for some reason, we didn't want to do this, then the work would never be done.
Correct.
Okay, good. We're on? We're on, we're ready? Yes? Hey?
Do you want to do?
No, we can keep going. Yep, yep. The next item, Charlie, is the Fall Mountain Water Paving Project. Why don't you get on that one next?
Yeah, I'll bounce around here. Yeah, a little bit. We didn't coordinate. The project is called Fall Mountain Water Road Paving, which is semi-confusing. It led to a little bit of a delay in the project being done. The project came, goes back to when Fall Mountain was getting the water project, which I think was 2009 or somewhere in that ballpark as well. So this project's been around for a long time also. The state thought that the paving project was for a road called Fall Mountain Water Road. When they saw that it was for a road called Allentown Road, there became a little bit of a scuttle and it took some months and years to change the paperwork for that small little snafu. We still call the project Fall Mountain Water Road Paving, but it should be pronounced Fall Water, Fall Mountain Water Road Paving. It's all in how you pronounce it. This is the last portion of the Fall Mountain area. After the water project caved, the Fall Mountain area, every road got done. And this past year, we did a portion of Allentown Road up into where we are here, where Fall Mountain Lake Road comes in. All of this got redone last year and all the way down to the Lane Hill Road. And there was a little portion of Eastview that we did last year as well. So all, every other road you see on this map that is not highlighted has been paved within five, eight years and has seen regular maintenance since then. This portion of the road and a few different intersections creates, has a few geometrical problems with the design. So we tried to, rather than just pave the road, we wanted to fix some geometrical deficiencies in the road. It's a humpskin road and the fact that there's a 15% grade change on this road, it's a constant curve vertically. You're going through a sag and then you're going uphill and you're going through a crest the whole time. There's lots of driveways and lots of roads, pretty much like a 25 intersection road and it's very difficult to design very well. As you're coming from Bristol, when they just redid their road before they just dug it up again for whatever reason, there is an eight-foot offset on the road. This is up, right up the side of the slide is where the Fall Mountain Firehouse is. Eastview Road is over here by the flag. The flag is at the firehouse. Right in front of the firehouse, the gutter line of that side of the road is just about matches Bristol, but Bristol widened their road out years ago and created this eight-foot offset so that when you're coming from Bristol going into Plymouth, you're probably driving too fast, first of all, and you also have to go into the oncoming lane of traffic to stay on the road. So that right there is one of the big things we wanted to fix with this project. There's also a few driveways on this hill that the people living there can't see getting in or out of because of the hill that they're on, the grid of that hill. We're trying to fix that, we're regrading the properties. Down by the bottom of the road, there's water issues. There's been many drainage problems down there that have gone patch to patch through years and trying to live with that we're going to fix all the way to the Fall Mountain Lake Road. This will also, this will be a, this will be a 28-foot road, this will be a 28-foot road because it's classification. And then where it matches the old road where we just redid, it narrows back to match the original. This is a close-up shot of the intersection of Town Line Road. This is getting funded through two different grants. Originally, there was a $490,000 grant and then after doing the design and seeing how much drainage is involved and the extent of which we have to create back people's properties along the road and fill that estimate, so we had to go and get some more funding. We were able to account for another $200,000 worth of funding that is 80% reimbursed. So of that second, of that $200,000 funding we're getting, we have to pay $40,000 out of pocket for it. So the total cost estimate for this project is about $690,000, of which $650,000 would be reimbursed. This, we're about 90% complete with the design as it is currently. The DOT is doing a review and we have to do some permitting through DOT as part of the projects to get it done. We're going to do some rights-of-way this winter and this will be a summer 2016 construction project. Are there any questions?
Well, back in February, you estimated this to cost $751,000 and now it's $690,000. Any particular reason why it dropped $60,000 dollars?
That additional cost was on is for the engineering of the road.
So we're paying that separately?
Correct. That's not reimbursable. That's not part of the project. For most of these projects, these deals with projects, the towns have to pay for their engineering because the state doesn't want to pay for everything. They want the towns to be involved in the process somewhat and that's how they assure that the projects are done, that the towns are happy with how the projects are getting done as well.
I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is we've got to be $40,000 of the project because you're estimating that it's going to be $690,000 and they're getting reimbursed $650,000. But back in February, I have an estimate out of this paper that says it was going to be $751,000.
Yeah, that's $61,000 for the engineering for the road.
Still the engineering of the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the only difference. The construction estimate's always been right around $700,000, then $690,000.
So where are you going to get the rest of your dollars paid?
Uh...
Does that got to come out of your normal budget?
I...
What's that? Right there. I'm above it. No, no. What I'm trying to say, I have a piece of paper that shows how much these were estimated out back in February and you estimated it was going to be $751,000 and now we're saying it's going to be $690,000 for the complete project. So I'm just saying there's a 60 grand difference. I'm just curious, did you go out for a quote and decided it wasn't going to be as expensive or?
We have, we have on-call engineers from a bid that went out in 2012. So based on those prices and where that bid was set up, we have on-call engineering companies to do designs and other services. So there was, there was a base bid and there's been some changes since then based on reviews from the DOT where we've had to do additional design and such, so the number has changed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next item is going to be the Plymouth Firehouse. We have a, we have a building committee that we appointed here last fall that had been working on this firehouse to put together the logistics of it and the cost of it and Victor, I think, is here someplace and whoever else in the department is wanting to talk about this tonight. You can use the mic if it works okay there. Maybe you've got to stand away from it a little bit.
Yes, sir.
That's to turn it on, right? Good evening and thank you for inviting us here to present our project to town council and board finance. My name is Victor Mitchell. I'm chairman of the building committee for the addition and renovation of Plymouth Firehouse. We have talked to zoning, we've already talked to inland wetlands. We have talked to zoning, we've already talked to inland wetlands, we already have had permission and approval on those, those ends of the project. So we're at a point now to actually discuss the actual project itself, the building. We had some presentations in the past about purpose of this, of building and part of the reasons for this. It revolves primarily around safety, it also revolves around the idea that this building is fifty years old, built in nineteen sixty-five. And we actually have two formats, two issues of safety here. I'd like to invite Chief Sikorski, who is also a member of the building committee, to speak on, uh, the safety especially that pertains to, pertains to Route Six.
Thanks Vic and, uh, thank the board of finance and the council for listening to us here for a little while. Um, the biggest problem is, I think we all know Route Six. It's a nightmare. And if you sit in the Plymouth Firehouse and you watch the traffic go by, the vehicles do not even stop to the red light. The trucks are getting so big today that we have to, if there's, under normal circumstances, we go out for a training exercise, we can pull behind a firehouse and try to maneuver around and we could back in, but when everybody comes in for a fire, to get the truck back in the firehouse, we have to go across Route Six. We have to stop traffic both ways. We have a few members that are sitting here that had to jump on a sidewalk, one even broke the mirror off a guy's car because he wouldn't stop. He almost got killed. But the bigger issue is here is it's not that this could happen, it's just a matter of time. We can't get the fire truck out or fire trucks to go to an emergency. The traffic does not let us come out with the lights and sirens on. If you pull out, you gotta keep nosing out and what they do at night is they look at the post office in Plymouth to make sure there's no headlights to try to get out of the firehouse. It's just a matter of when I call the mayor or I have to go to somebody's house, one of the firefighter's wives or daughters or somebody and say, "We just had an accident." Because it's just a matter of time, that's how bad of a situation this is. Trailer trucks, and when you sit at the traffic light, I've sat there many times just to look at this, six to seven cars come up the hill and they go right through the red light, don't even stop. We have control of the light, we hit it, the light turns red, the cars just keep coming. They're going where they want to go. They don't care if there's a fire, emergency, it doesn't make no difference. And this is what really bothers us the most. We're here for free on top of it, paid or free, it doesn't really make a difference. Nobody wants to get killed. Uh, never mind wreck a five-hundred-thousand-dollar truck because that's what's gonna happen. But really, it's life safety, it's a very serious situation. And we didn't start this project last week to come crying for it is. We've been in the works for a while. We're trying to get our facts correct. We compute with the correct answers, um, but safety is, it's a very bad situation. Somebody's gonna get hurt and it's gonna happen very soon. Trailer trucks are the worst, oil trucks, dump trucks, they just, if they crest the top of that hill and they get a yellow light, they're going right through and boy, I'll tell you, I hate to see what's gonna happen. And, and, and even our firefighters responding to the firehouse. They can't even get to the firehouse. People don't let them cross the road if they're coming from the country store side. It, it's just a nightmare. Uh, there's no visibility and the traffic is just horrendous. I mean, that's really the safety issue. Um, we're doing the best we can not to have our firefighters out on the road to stop the traffic, get the trucks in, we try to move cars. That becomes a pain when you have a winter like we had this year where the back parking lot's full of snow, uh, there's just no room to maneuver in there. You know, when they built it in sixty-five, they had a, a nineteen-fifty-four international truck. I mean, you could zip it around the backyard and, you know, you'd make it in there, but there's, it's not possible anymore. Not with a sixty-thousand-pound tanker and then we have a new engine over there. So really on the safety, I mean, that's the biggest issue, is, is the traffic. We can't get out. I, I don't know, we got control of the light, I, I don't have another answer other than to have another entrance on it to South Street, which our building chairman will discuss that, which would show you the plans that we have. That's really the safest way to operate. It will make our response time much faster, um, especially going to the Lake Plymouth area and out to Greystone where we go quite often. This project is, uh, yeah, it's, to me, it's, it's a number one priority. It's not because we want new firehouse or add this to our, that's not the point. If this firehouse was on a side street somewhere, we'd live with it. We understand where the dollars are coming from. We always present the board of finance with a direct budget, we, for, for, you know, you get the most bang for your buck. We're not the fish and game club, we're the fire service. You know, we don't ask for much other than what we need to do the job correctly and more, you know, more safely for, for our members. You know, it's, it's, put yourself in my shoes, it's bad enough, I had a few people I had to go to over the last twenty years as chief and tell their wives they got hurt. I, I don't want to do that for something that probably could be avoided, um, with some money or a good plan like we have here. Questions?
Chief, there's no question. If you did that and you got these approvals, would it be, um, beneficial for you guys? I know it sounds crazy, but to actually come in pointing, heading off of Route Six and then using this new area to go out where you can go out towards the light, head out? You know what I mean?
Uh, the way it would work is the garage doors would be on the back of the firehouse, the new part, and then go out South Street and then you could go...
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Exactly. We'd have, uh, I don't know how, with the building chairman talking that because we got a two-part...
That would definitely help you, chief, right? To come out and add there?
Absolutely. And we wouldn't enter, offer, enter Route Six anymore.
Right.
The only people that would come if we had some firefighters living near the country store, they would pull into the firehouse. All the traffic would go out onto South Street.
Yeah, well, for the engines, I mean, yeah, that, you know, personal access, I think firefighters in a situation are gonna come however they can come.
We're trying to limit Route Six, uh, you know, like ninety percent.
Where you could own that intersection.
Correct.
Yeah.
And even if we come down South Street to the intersection, we have visibility. Now, when you're in a fire truck, you can see down the hill, you can see up the hill, but not where the firehouse is. Unless you want to start buying a gas station and everything else, then you'll have visibility. So, you know, we did a lot of research to try to find the best and safe way and the cheapest way.
Right. Right, so it, it might actually be where the trucks would be nosed in off of Route Six, right? And when they're parked in the house.
Their, their, their backs will be facing north and south and I, I think once the building chairman gets done, he'll be, he'll explain it to you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
The way we have the, the bays set up, it'll be drive-through bays. Yeah, it's drive, uh, it's drive-through bays, so, um, we won't be backing across Route Six, we won't be backing into South Street. Uh, that's the safest way for the firefighters, uh, and it's the most effective and efficient way, uh, to get the apparatus out of the building.
Right, so that would, that would, that would be you having you head out onto South Street?
Yes.
To get into that. That's, that's what I mean, I, maybe I'm, I, I'm not trying to confuse anybody, but yeah. The tail end of the truck would actually be pointing towards Route Six in the, in the firehouse at that time, right?
No, actually, we would come off of Route Six, drive behind the firehouse.
Let's look at the plans, Gary. I think, I think they'll come into focus for you. I mean, they're doing exactly what you're saying.
All right, all right.
Can you point that?
I told you to push the table.
I did. Hey, here's a nice town hall, leave that.
You're giving away all my secrets.
Hey, I didn't push that many times.
Oh, I know how you do this.
All right, here we are.
Watch your eyes, Dave.
I'm used to a hammer, you know? Here's Route Six, uh, right about where the E is, is where the intersection is, where the gas station is. You go up this way where the country store is. Fire trucks, whether, whichever way they're coming back from an emergency call, will come off of Route Six, come behind the building and the bays are here. So the front of the fire truck will be here, the rear of the fire truck will be here. And they will exit out onto South Street and go to Lake Plymouth or go to downtown or up North Street or down to Thompson.
Okay. Well, I, you know, it's easier this way. Thank you, Charlie.
No, it's, thank you, chief.
The building itself, um... The, the building itself, um, will maintain the construction it is right now, it's brick and mortar and block. If you could put the first, no, the other one, the other first one. That's it. That's an exterior, that's an exterior design of the building. There are some things that we won't be doing like the way the windows are and doors and garage space. But, uh, the front of the building will be maintained the way it is right now. Uh, like I said, the building is solid and, and, and very secure. All the trucks will be backed in the, where the garage is, will be built, which is behind the dome. Uh, the present older part of the station will be renovated into offices, into a training center. Uh, we're also gonna improve the kitchen, which is a very, very small room right now. When the building was built back in sixty-five, Chief is correct, it was built for nineteen-fifty-eight, fifty-nine vehicles. Uh, nowhere near as wide, nowhere near as tall. Today, trucks are, are huge, there's no doubt about it. I've been firefighting out for over forty years and, uh, believe me, they are tremendously different than what we started. So there's also a safety factor inside the building because there isn't necessarily the room around the vehicle any longer. So, so the building, um, the addition will be in the rear of the building, along with that will be offices, a radio center, um... I guess you need a few more moves system. So the exterior of the building will be, um, so we're gonna maintain the, the looks of the, of the present community. It'll again, look very similar to what the present one. Uh, we won't match the brick, so there won't be a big difference between the two when we put the building together. Right, go on for the, um, that's the wall. That one. That's very, that's basically the same picture we have of the front there. Uh, there was one, one spot, when we did inland wetlands, that there was a touch of a concern, uh, believe it or not, there's a one little two-foot section, um, uh, in the rear of the property that was any sort of wet, but that was not assessed at all by the architect or, or by inland wetlands commission. But again, if you notice that, trucks would drive through and depart on, on the South Street. Want to put the other one up now? This is our interior, this is the interior view of the... All right. Uh, this is the interior view, doesn't work wrong, that's okay. That's the interior view of the firehouse. We're gonna maintain, like I said, the exterior of the old firehouse, the new firehouse, it is very similar to the, to the, to the brick. We're gonna go from a three-thousand-square-foot building to approximately a ten-thousand-square-foot building. So the addition will be approximately seven-thousand square feet. There's a lot of things we're gonna be putting in here that will duplicate what is also being done at, at headquarters. Uh, one of the things would be adding what's called a cascade system, which is an air compressor for air bottles. We have one at headquarters, it's nice to have a duplicate program so if something happens with the ones down, down, downtown. In addition, um, because the amount of traffic on Route Six that we've already, we've already talked about, there have been times when in a very real sense, we were by ourselves in Plymouth and headquarters was by itself at headquarters because of the problems with Route Six. So this will make us a little more self-sufficient and necessary. In addition, there'll be a, a radio room, uh, which will match what's at headquarters. What that'll do is, uh, give us access to all the tower vehicles, police, uh, ambulance, and other, other sections, which we really don't have now in Plymouth at all. So in some ways, it'll be an addition to what, what's just there now. The entire building will have sprinklers. Uh, none of the firehouses now have sprinklers and when you're talking apparatus, the new truck we just received, which is over two, five million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars, um, there's a lot of equipment and supplies in there, it'd be foolish not to have, uh, sprinkler system put in. We're on city water now, all the firehouses are, Plymouth's on city water, along with city sewer, along with, uh, natural gas. So all those functions will be, uh, used in the new firehouse too. There will be a dayroom in there, which is exactly what it is, but there'll also be a very large training group in there, which other...
We made some adjustments.
We did. Works, yes?
I don't know, I'm trying. It's supposed to be. There you go.
When we do this at the firehouse, this'll work. We are gonna be putting in a commercial break kitchen into the building. Uh, one of the, the facto things of Plymouth Firehouse is, is actually a shelter. Uh, we've used it more than once as a shelter, not just for the firefighters, when we had to maintain it during storms or the hurricane, uh, but also a lot of folks who do get stranded on Route Six, they're not gonna make it to, to, to the high school, um, or, or Eli Terry. They've been using our location as, as a place to come to, so we've been opening our doors for them. There will be, uh, three other offices in there at this time. The reason those rooms are there, set up the way they are, is, you know, looking toward the future. Eventually, this town will have paid firefighters. There's no two ways about it. Those rooms could be converted into condos, that's why we put them in, in that, that frame. I believe when we looked at our discussions and what we've talked about, we're looking at a hundred-year building. In fact, the front part of the building will be a hundred-and-fifty-year building. There's no reason why this one won't meet the, the long-term needs of the department as, as we see it right now. The bays are wide enough, the ceiling's tall enough, the doors are tall enough. If you go to headquarters, you may even notice that one of the doors where the tower truck is parked, uh, the top is notched out. That was the only way we could fit the tower truck in there. These doors, you won't have to do that to because they won't be tall enough to, to make, to, uh, drive those vehicles in. There's a lot of things we're putting in here, again, thinking toward the future, especially with IT programs, uh, wireless programs, training, uh, which is, which is a big, big need for the department. Uh, on the present property right now, there is a, uh, in the rear of the building, there is a, a training center, storage, that'll be demolished and so part of this building will also may have storage in for the extra hose we have, snow blower, lawnmower and things like that. Questions about the building? Oh, uh, the price, I probably, if you haven't heard that already, um, at this point here, we've, we've dealt with, um, done a tremendous amount of research, members of the committee have. Uh, we talked to a couple of contractors, get some of their takes on these things. Uh, nothing has gone out to bid, nothing has been out there. Uh, we don't, have not secured an architect or any of these things. The price we're talking at this time is, is three-point-seven-five million dollars. Questions? How we should start?
We just have one. If you could just explain to everybody, um, the advantage of the cascade system being in Plymouth. I'm sure a lot of people don't understand what that's all about.
Well, it's a duplicate system. Do you want to say anything about market system? You know, you gotta realize that we have, uh, fifty air packs or sixty air packs, a hundred bottles, um, we do have a major incident. That compressor that we have is very taxed. Um, if we do have another run at the same time, I mean, we're scrambling to fill bottles. Um, every call we go to, just about other than a brush fire, you have to wear a SCVA. Car fires, any type of electrical fire, any hazmat incident, structure fires, so we wear them all the time. You see the guys get off the truck, no matter what house you're at, CO calls, if there's a high CO level, then I'll, got to have an air pack on it. It's something that we use every day at every call other than a brush fire.
That's right, I, everybody would be happy to know.
Yeah, it's very, very heavily taxed compressor. We can, if they have twenty-five bottles over the Plymouth company that they use, they can go back to their own firehouse and fill them and this compressor will be so taxed as it is now.
Great feature.
One of the other things we've built into this building too, uh, which, uh, we've been asking about for years from capital improvements, uh, there will be a ventilation system for the apparatus. Uh, this way, the carcinogens from diesel fuel won't be lining the walls, the walls won't be black, uh, it'll actually be pumped out of the building through pipes that will be attached to the exhaust systems of the trucks. This is a long time in coming and again, it's a great health and safety issue for the firefighters. Also in here, there will be a workout room, uh, which we haven't even figured all the, how that will work out just yet, but that, that is actually our plan too. Again, dealing with health and safety. Uh, the Perrigo Fire Department has done a tremendous amount over the years with, with physicals and training, um, standards that we maintain in all the firefighters and this will just be, uh, going along with what we've already been doing. So questions? Other questions?
Just a couple of questions. You said this is a, a block building, this is gonna be cinder block building with...
It'll be brick on the outside, uh, and, and should be blocking the inside.
Have you looked at, I mean, um, have you looked at any other building materials like, like metal buildings or any of that? Have you, I know a lot of companies are starting to do metal buildings.
We've, we've talked about it. Uh, we felt it would be, um, a eyesore to the neighborhood and to the center of Plymouth to put up a tin building. Simple as that. So we felt we would stick with what was there and, uh, sort of improve it and build off of that. But we did talk about it, absolutely.
The other question I had was, um, I'm, I'm very familiar with the intersection of Six and South Street. I travel that, that road a couple times a week at least and, uh, the one thing that really concerns me about... anyway, because there is no line of sight down Route Six, when you're actually sitting at that light, that, that antique store blocks that entire hill.
We, we've actually worked with the apparatus, in one sense, I know what you're saying, with the truck sort of easing, I almost say easing into the intersection, but coming out, you can't see down the hill paths to the side now, because the truck is tall enough. You're right, there will still be people that will pass it regardless of how many lights we have out there and everything else, it happens all the time.
Right, and that's, that's probably my biggest concern with the building.
Well, right now, we can't see them and they can't see us. And we do look at the reflection at night, we look at the headlights, to see if they're bouncing off either the grain, the old grating through the post office, and that does give us a...
Is there, is there, I don't know who, Charlie, but is there any way to get DOT to put something farther, I mean, when you're traveling down Route Six towards Bristol, they have a sign halfway down the hill that says that the stoplight is red. Is there anything that can be placed down the hill? I mean, the neighbors are probably going to hate it.
Well, that was, that was in our purview, so I imagine it's a possibility. There has been talk, I know when that intersection is being upgraded, about what's called an aftercon system, which means the lights will change when they hear a sign where the lights are strobed. That's a whole different thing though.
Okay, great, thank you.
Question. You said that this did not go out to bid, and you've got a, looks like a firm price. Where did you acquire this? You've got a lot of things that you talked about for additions, as well as making the building more than twice the size, where did you come up with this price?
The building committee itself did a fair amount of research, both online, along with, one of the resourceful things about members of the fire departments, as we all know, people everywhere. So we also visited other firehouses, to get some idea not of design, but also ideas of cost. We visited, our members talked to other folks who do HVAC systems, who do the systems for, for the sprinklers. I talked to the folks who put the air systems in for fire trucks to get the exhaust out. So all those things were added in. We did talk to one, a couple contractors, one contractor in particular, to have him give us some ideas of what he thought. And in very many ways, what we had projected, and we're almost on mark with what he had projected. This is a prevailing wage project, we got to include that in there too, which does add an additional cost. So we did a fair amount of research in six months.
You're, you're going to have to make a road going out to South Street.
That'll be the other part of the driveway, yes. Part of this property acquisition of the property there, and that will be...
That's part of the project, an acquisition of that property and the construction of the...
Absolutely. That's already been approved pending purchase of the property, of course.
Do you want to explain to me what's going on with that property on South Main Street?
No, I can't explain it, but honestly...
I'm so confused, I've heard so many things.
I, I can maybe help a little bit here, Tom. We have, we've talked to the owner, who is, who is more than willing to sell this to us. We have, if you look at, at the plans, you'll see where the lot was all divided up. And, and we had to take that, that then went to, to ZVA, because it had to be, you know, when, when, once we purchased this property for that firehouse, what, what they will have will be a non-conforming lot when he's done. I mean, he'll have the, he'll have the house, and then, and he won't have a lot of property. And we did make some concessions and give him some more, a little more property on the side, and we did move the driveway back a little bit to, to give him a concession where he'll have a little more room between the driveway and the back of his house. But it, it is a lot that, that he's fully aware of, it's a lot that, that ZVA has already approved for a, for, for a lot for that house, so it has been approved.
So we are not taking that house?
We're not going to take that, that house, yeah. I mean, you know, how it actually goes down, I, I, I can't tell you for sure, I mean, it's a, because he was talking about for tax purposes, we may buy the whole thing and then sell it him back, the lot, or however it is that's going to be the best, give him the best tax advantages, is, we, you know, turn a couple ideas there, but no, we are not going to have that house or that lot.
Thank you.
Other questions, might you ask?
I'll just be first, I'm going to read here. In the Paul Mountain Firehouse, how many trucks do we have?
Two, two pumbers.
And in the Terryville one?
Headquarters, they have two pumbers, we have a standby pumper, a rescue truck, and a tow truck, and a, and a utility vehicle, which is a pickup truck.
So you have four plus a utility vehicle?
Yes. Five, actually five, with the, with the standby pumper. That's one that we use when it's out of service, so we run out to, move all the trucks around.
All, all of those vehicles are housed in the building?
At headquarters, yes.
At headquarters, okay. And how many vehicles do you have right now in Plymouth?
Three.
And how many do you want to have?
Well, probably, there's only going to be a four-bay station. When all is said and done, we're probably going to, we might add additional vehicles somewhere down the road, but the bays will be four bays. The way the bays are situated, two of them are sixty feet, one of them is, two of them are fifty feet. Actually, at the fifty-foot station, or fifty-foot bays, you're essentially only going to fit one truck in there. At the sixty-foot, you'll be able to fit a truck and probably a pickup truck or a, a small tack pumper.
Now, you said that the trucks are, the fire trucks are getting bigger.
Yes.
Are you finding that the buildings in Plymouth are getting taller, that you need a bigger truck?
Oh, no, 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 that, that, well, that's not really, that would be an issue for doing a tower or ladder truck. We're talking this with vehicles are getting bigger because of OSHA standards, no one can ride on the outside of the vehicle anymore. So usually we put either a five or a six-man cab, so everybody has to be enclosed in the cab. To fit the equipment that's required on there, the vehicle essentially has to be taller, really can't make it much larger. So, because there's certain things you have to have under, that what's called a Class A pumper by stature.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Bert.
One more, one more question. Worst of the biggest fire you've ever had in town, and how many trucks have you used?
Well, it was before my time, though, when you go lock branch. And I was not here living in town, I was in Brooklyn three years ago.
Well, how about you know what I'm talking about? I mean, in, in general, it's been...
Well, I tell you, the worst fire, the very worst fire was the one on my street, Hillside Avenue, when someone was killed in the fire call. That was the worst one, worst one I ever attended, yeah.
But normally, how many trucks respond?
All, all the vehicles respond.
From all, from all three stations?
Well, it depends on the call. Obviously, if it's just a little car accident on North Main Street in Terryville, probably Paul Mountain's not going to respond, or Plymouth. But if it comes in as a house fire, or suspected house fire, and that's why traveling to and from the firehouse is so dangerous, because we don't really know the call, till one of the officers get there, which is called command, and tells them what the situation is. But under normal circumstances, if it comes in as a house fire, essentially all the vehicles go in.
So you'd have ten vehicles there then?
It could, it could in certain circumstances. If one on South Main Street, I would say we probably had all of them for the house down there.
Plus Thomas.
Plus, plus Thomas, yeah, because we needed extra water, because there was no hydrants down there.
Okay, just, I don't know, so thankfully I haven't experienced that.
Well, as a, nothing to do with this project, but as a sidelight, the members of the department, except for the office, chief officers, report to the firehouse and ride the vehicles to the call. So essentially, when you get to a fire call, you don't have seventy-five cars there, you just have the fire trucks, essentially. Okay, we're good, no further questions for fire committee? Okay, thank you. Charlie, I'm going to go back, back over to you here, would you cover the East Orchard Bridge?
Let me see, that would be backwards. East Orchard Bridge is near Veterans Memorial Park. Eagle Street, the one-way road coming from Route Six, you go to that four-way stop sign, it's pretty much right there. I'll show you some other pictures where you can see it a little better. You would drive right over, not even knowing it was there. It's not a big bridge, it's not a glorious bridge, but it is still a bridge that the state deemed deficient years ago, and the town was able to acquire a grant to pay for a portion of the bridge to replace the bridge. This is standing in the four-way intersection of East Orchard and Eagle Street. The bridge is right here, this is, see a little bit of railing right there, in the distance is the Eli Terry retirement community. A little, little bit closer review, you can kind of see over here how the, the road is washing out around the bridge. This is the channel, the wing walls of the bridge, the water flows this way through the bridge. Just like that. So this upstream wing walls have collapsed and are collapsing, they're falling into the river, the river is a lot higher now than it used to be historically, so we don't get the flow through this bridge anymore than we used to. A little bit closer of how dilapidated it is, this is pointing in that same direction, we just got a little bit closer each time. We can see that all of these used to be up here, and very similar over here, and all this silt that is in there has filled in over the years. This would be the other side of the bridge, this would be standing on the retirement community side, looking towards the park over here. And again, you're going to see, you can't see under the bridge, but you can see going under the bridge how disrepair it is. So this was, and this was a grant where we got forty-nine point oh-six percent reimbursed, and that basically depends on the cost of the bridge, and also depends on the capital of the town, how many people are in town. So the more people you have, the less gets chipped in, or vice versa, I forget what it works. The, Plymouth has to pay the majority of the, the cost of, cost, just by a little bit, forty-nine point oh-six is reimbursed, which comes out to two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, gets reimbursed, four-hundred-and-fifty-three, I think it is? Yeah. So the, the estimated cost is four-hundred-and-fifty-three, two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, which would be coming back. This is a bridge that, if we didn't get this money, would still have to be replaced. You know, it's, with, with any bridge, and you can't predict exactly when it's going to fail, it gets ranked on a, by the state, the state was out in inventories bridges, for now. For the state, for everybody in the state, they inventoried bridges, they ranked them. North Main Street Bridge, that we talked about previously a little bit, was also ranked deficient, and that there is a little bit of grant money along with that as well. There's some other bridges that we have gotten agreements, or are looking forward to getting from programs to get some more bridges replaced in the future as well. This particular East Orchard Street Bridge, we'll just focus on that right now. This was a state local bridge program, two thousand and fourteen, is where the funding comes from, forty-nine point oh-six percent. Right now, we are ninety percent design completion, there was money to do the design in this year's capital improvements, portion of the budget. We are currently doing design reviews and permitting, and we are on schedule for a construction in the summer of two thousand and sixteen. Any questions? The way it is right now is it's, will be a boxhole, we're replacing it, essentially a pre-cast structure just getting dropped in. The road will be closed for a portion of time to accommodate the removal of the existing bridge. There is actually a, a gas main that goes directly through the bridge, if you got down in there and looked, you could just see a pipe going right through it, that's going to have to get relocated either beneath the bridge or around the bridge. So that's a little bit of that as well. So it's going to be closed, I don't remember the exact timeframe of construction exactly, but the idea is that it'll all be pre-cast somewhere else and just put into place, because it's not a huge, it's not a huge bridge.
That's surprising, it costs five hundred thousand dollars, basically, I mean, just seems very expensive to replace. That's by the gas main, so you're looking, the gas main, you're looking at it.
That, that's usually gets done on the gas company's dollar. But given that it's a state thing, I think that they have reimbursed some expenses as well, though, but not, not coming out of that toll.
Thank you. And question, so that the state has ranked this as deficient, now the state has a ranked system, does it not?
Correct.
Okay, and what, what is the, the best rank? I don't, I don't remember myself what the...
It's a, it's a number scale, ten would be brand new, one would be collapsed, I think, four, I think anything below four is considered deficient, or maybe below four, below three is considered deficient, and I'm not, can't tell you exactly how it breaks down, each number is what name.
And what was this, what was this bridge rated as?
Deficient.
For what number?
I don't, I don't have that number. Less than four.
Any other questions for this project?
Charlie, where did the, where did the four-fifty-three come from? How did we arrive at that?
That was made with you. That is, that's the construction estimate, that is part of the design, all throughout the process, is the, a construction estimate, that is something that the design engineers come up with. When you apply for the grant at the, the origin of the project, you take, you do a very rough guess of what you think it's going to cost without doing a whole lot of research. And usually, all of that gets done by the consultant at no cost, because they want, they want us to acquire those funds, because they know that we're going to have to hire somebody to do the design. So they, that application is usually done by the consultants, free of charge, and it could be done by any number of consultants, and then once you acquire funds, if you do, you have to hire, unless you're doing it in-house, which we don't have that capability to do in-house, then we'd have to go out. So, the application gets done by a consultant, they do a best guess, a cost estimate, that's where that four-fifty-three comes from originally. And as the design progresses, it gets more, yeah, refined, yeah, good word.
Okay, moving on. Next item, Charlie, is going to be the, this is the Main Street Streetscape Phase Two, this is the, this is the project that, this is the money that we received, you guys remember last year when the governor came here and, and gave us the five hundred thousand dollars, that was that for the continuation of that streetscape, the streetscape downtown, so...
Easy for you to say.
Easy to listen.
Again, this is, this is a mirror image of the streetscape that we did on Main Street. It's going to be continuing that project, when that project was done, two thousand and twelve, before that it was designed for both sides of the road. So we, we already knew that we were going to be doing it, this is just a continuation, now that we got more money to do so. There have been some changes as far as the design, as we've gone, and we've learned some things while doing the other side, that we've changed, but it's going to be the same granite curves, the same bricks, the same five-foot walk, and just to clean up the frontage, you're going to have the light poles to match the other side. That is what, that's a freshly done Streetscape Phase One picture. This is another one freshly done. You can kind of see all having the full pictures of what it looked like on the other, what the other side of the road looks like, being the sign seen in the background. We talked about, the original plan had for a grass section to be up near the road behind the curb, so you would have the curb, you would have a section of grass, then you would have the bricks, then you would have the sidewalk. We changed that to bring the bricks up, so we got rid of the grass, because we have a problem with grass growing right next to Route Six, and we didn't really want weed gardens on our Main Street. So we're going to, there's... to, there's going to essentially be the same things that you see on the other side. You're going to have the granite curves that's, it's got a fairly sharp edge to it so that people don't drive up on it. There's going to be some odd street parking in front of the, I don't know, what do you want to call that building that's there? The store building that's, that's on there. That was where they currently park on the sidewalk. They're not going to be able to do that in the future. And when talking to that property owner, manager, one of his real beefs was parking, and that's, that's a big problem we have in downtown in general. And he, we didn't want to take that away from him, he didn't want us to take that away from him. So we're going to give him some room to park on, on the road there. That was, that was important. There are, there's going to be a retaining wall on that portion as well, or right next to that building will be a small retaining wall, four feet or less for the property next door. So where the sidewalk is now, that as you leave in front of that store, you go uphill and you go downhill, that will all be flat to the road, and will have the same cross-section all the way up and down the road with a six-inch curb reveal and then slope towards the road. And it'll be a four-foot wall in front of that guy's house. I think his name's Bill. For whatever it's worth. And we're regrading a lot, a lot of his yard at the moment. But he's, he's been a very good advocate for this project.
This is like in like a hundred fifty to a hundred sixty address area, like across...
One fifty Main Street is the building right on the corner.
Yeah, yeah, from there, from there east is what you're...
Right. This will go from...
I'm sorry, west, I'm sorry, well, okay.
This will go from where we left off, where we did in front of one fifty and one fifty-two or four. That...
Like a building, property?
Yeah, this, right.
Okay.
It's going to go from where we stopped, and it's going to go up through Park Street, through, through the church, and it's going to stop at Holden Park Lane or Park Street on there.
And you're going to have lighting on that side of the road as well?
Any other questions for this project?
Why are they using granite curving? Wouldn't we get a lot more bang for our buck if we just had normal sidewalks?
Granite curving is ideal because it lasts really well. It weathers really well, and it handles the abuse really well. The problem with concrete curb, which is also great, is that, as you know from your cars, the asphalt we put down on the roads isn't as great for the concrete curbs. And concrete curb is still better than the asphalt curb, which has a terrible lifetime. And the state plows use this road because it's not a town road. We don't control what gets put down on these roads or how they're plowed. Are the guys maintaining this. So granite, granite curb is the best way to keep people from driving on the sidewalks and ruining them like they were before, and to keep the plow drivers from ripping up the curbs like they were before, and are going to last the longest so we don't have to rehab them anytime soon. Not in my lifetime.
Okay. Next item is going to be the road improvements, we call it road improvements Phase Two. And I really think that we would be missing the boat if anytime we did a, if we, we're going to do a project like this and bond money like this, we need to keep our road project going. We do have some money left over. We're going to be able to continue with the last bond package. Originally, I think we had two million dollars here because I really wanted to have a little more money in here, but we cut that figure down here so that we could keep our disservice line item the same. That was one of the reasons why it's a million dollars. But Charlie, you want to go over the list of roads and stuff that we talked about? Are you up there?
Absolutely. We have the, the bond package was done in 2012 where we had four-point-eight million dollars set aside to do various road improvements on various different roads. That portion of the bond package, the total bond package was for nine-point-eight million dollars. Four-point-eight was for those various roads. We are not done yet. We have one road left to do, but we're a million, a million point one plus or minus change under budget accomplishing all that. So we, it was managed really well. We took advantage of favorable financial conditions because of the recession in that time, and we got a lot, we got a lot done the way that we organized it by the town being the general contractor and dealing with different vendors to accomplish different things and getting a lot done at the same time. That same, that same plan, if you will, we look to do forward for more roads in this portion. Now, there was approximately twenty-two miles of road that we were to get improved on the current bond package at four-point-eight million dollars. That included different rehab types to the roads. There's, there's four different structures. There's, there's more than that, but for intents and purposes, we bring it down to four different classifications. Base rehab, where you're basically rebuilding a road. Mill and overlay, where you're just changing the wearing surface. Preventative maintenance, where you're just crack sealing and filling potholes, things along those lines. And routine maintenance, preventive and routine. Routine maintenance is a little bit more intense. It's your, where you seal the whole road, you do, you do the whole road rather than just spots. What we wanted to do as part of this, and I say we, this is on behalf of the Public Works Advisory Commissioner on board with this plan as well, we wanted to do, we wanted to fix roads mainly with this money. It was kind of the current bond package, like four-point-eight million dollars spread out, doing all four of those different classifications. We wanted to try and, and fix roads that we know are deficient and they have a bad base underneath them with, with this bonded money. Preventative maintenance, routine maintenance are relatively inexpensive and go a long ways. That's, we have a great crack sealing program where we go out there and we crack seal the roads as much as we can every year because that extends the life of the roads and allows us to try to get ahead of the learning curve, or not the learning curve, ahead of the maintenance curve and the rehab curve. So we, what we're trying to do with this one million dollars, we're trying to spend the money rehabbing these roads, and we're also trying to close out loops. With, with the Fall Mountain, like we mentioned before, we had that section of Allentown Road that didn't get done because we knew we were going to have that grant money to fix it, and that's the, that's the only thing left to do up there. And we're done with Fall Mountain. We're all the way down to Lane Hill on Allentown, and all the way to Old Waterbury Road, and hopefully, we're going to get Old Waterbury Road fixed with the current extra bond money and some other stuff with that. So the list of roads, I'll just go down them real quick and then I'll show you where they are later. We're looking to do around, between Seymour Road and over near Harmington Avenue, Bernice, Command, Carriage, and Terry. Mostly residential streets, not highly trafficked. Command, or I think Commander Bernice, you're going to see the most out of all those. Terry Drive is a dead end. Carriage Drive is a dead end. We also have Sherman Lane, which is off of Beamer Street, but it's still in that, that neck of the woods. Now, one advantage to closing out these loops that I like to stress because it is also very important to our, getting our, the best value for our money, is that keeping these roads close to each other allows us to get a lot done at the same time without having to waste time mobilizing equipment, moving equipment around, whether it's us doing it or whether we have contractors doing it. That costs time and that costs money. When you're getting asphalt from the plant, when we're getting that installed, the more we can get down in a day, the less it costs the town. So by doing these groups, we are saving money. The other important part of that is that in the future, all of these roads are going to be on the same lifecycle so that when we're doing our crack sealing program and our preventative routine maintenance programs, we're not going to be doing that same chasing all around town. We're having our vendor, or maybe us in the future, localize this area and getting, getting more done in less time. The other portion, the other chunk of road is between Beamer Street and North Main Street, where you have Smith Street, Sunset Avenue, and Abbott Avenue. Bernice Command, Terry Drive, Carriage. Bernice is the one closer to Harmington Avenue, up near the industrial park. Command's the lower one. Terry Drive's a dead end that points towards Lake Winfield. Carriage Drive is right there. And Sherman is the loop that's off of Beamer Street. Now, on this, on this slide, you can also see that for each of these roads, this column here isn't marked, but this is the PCI, which is the pavement condition index, which, which is still from that study that was done in 2011, which was updated in 2014 to get the pavement condition index. That is what points us to the direction of what roads need the most attention. Now, there's a whole lot of subjectivity to that depending on which road you live on. I've said it a hundred times, I'll say it again today, any road, any road, they all need work. This, this is the list that we came up with that we think is the best way to utilize this million dollars at this time in the future. You know, hopefully there'll be more money bonded, we can get some more things done, but this is the best thing that we came up with for our, for our dollar right now. This is Beamer Street. Beamer Street is, is up here. This is Route Seventy-two, this would be North Main Street. Beamer Street from High Street, which is right here, all the way down to Seventy-two, and ends to Smith Street, just about where the highlighting ends on the slide, will be reconstructed this year. So this, this would not get done until Beamer Street is done, if this gets approved. At least the Smith Street portion will not get done because we don't have to wait for Beamer Street to get done. The road itself is going to be changing somewhat the grades and the cross-sections and such to match that in. We also have a big problem, we have two big problems down here, and I can't really fix both of them. I'll try as best I can. We have a big problem with a grade change at the Abbott, Abbott and North Main Street intersection. When you're pulling out to Abbott, I almost guarantee your, front of your car is going to drag going up that hill. That we want to fix. As we do this, there's a terrible sightline coming down Smith Street. We have to do like a one-eighty in your car to see back down North Main Street. I don't really know a good way to fix that given it's a huge grade change, but we're trying to increase that sightline going down North Main Street as much as possible. So there's two big safety things that we're going to address as best as possible also in this So, any questions?
Charlie, can you go back to your slide where you showed the street things?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted clarification.
Yes.
And there you show that Smith and...
Smith and...
...Abbott, I guess, or Mill and Overlay?
Smith and Sunset.
Smith and Sunset?
Yeah.
On the sheet that we got, it says it's going to be basically out of that. Is this a typo or is that correct?
No, no. This is the direct output of what's the...
From the study?
From the study. And that's...
So you're going to do a base rehab?
We're going to do a base rehab because those roads are one of the, the last, there's only, I think, Pearl Street after Abbott and Sunset, that were the old oil roads that haven't, haven't seen that before. So I don't think, and I don't really know unless we do samples, what we have for a road thickness there to get away with the Mill and Overlay, first of all. And given the, given the way it rides, there's, there's too many potholes and heaves to get, really to get a Mill and Overlay to work on those. So the computer spit out Mill and Overlay, professional opinion disagrees.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I have a question. I'm looking at the original nine-point-eight million dollar bond authorization, and it had four different sections. It had road improvements, which was four-point-eight million, the North Main Street Bridge, engineering studies, and on the second page, it had reconstruction of Seymour, Kimman, Bernice, and Ridge Road. Now, when I look at that map, it looks like Kimman is a relatively short street. I'm not really familiar with that area, so it looks short to me. Maybe it's not, maybe it's longer. And yet, and, and let me just read what it says here under that fourth section. It says, "Design, acquisition, construction, testing, and inspection of work on Seymour Road, including portions of Kimman Drive, Bernice Road, Ridge Road, and Harmington Avenue." So, did you do Kimman Drive and Bernice Road a portion of that? Was that completed in this first phase?
To do the Seymour Road project, we had to change the profile of the road quite a bit. It's been down there since it's got redone. If you remember what it was like before. There was some, some big grade changes at those intersections and some, some huge changes at the intersection of Ridge Road, which bridged the intersection down there and up here. The way it was written in there, those roads were included on that because we had to go do a portion of Kimman, we had to do a portion of Bernice, and we had to do a portion of Ridge Road to do Seymour Road. If we had wrote it just to reconstruct Seymour Road, then we technically couldn't fix those intersections. We would have had to stop at the end of Seymour Road. Because the grades were changing, we had to match into those streets, which requires us to go up Command, Bernice, Ridge Road to do that. So a portion of the roads were reconstructed, and it's generally, I think it's like a hundred and twenty feet on one of those and a hundred and fifty feet on the other that we had to go up each road. The portion was reconstructed, yes. It's not completely done. There's some curb that has to get done around that area still. That's punchless items left from Seymour Road. So to do the, do the entire road is not, was not ever part of that.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, you want to touch on the construction inspectors? Yeah, I don't have a slide for this because there's really not, unless you want to see it, it's probably the face, there's not really anything to put up there. All of these state projects, they're great because we get grant money to cover them. It does cost the town money for them. They come with a lot of baggage that has to get done. There's a lot of administration that's involved. There's a lot of inspection that's involved. And each of these, the Safe Roots to School project, the Fall Mountain Waterway Paving Project, those, and the Streetscape projects, we all definitely have to have an inspector out there every minute that the contractor is out there. That's just part of the agreement that the town has to get that money from them. Given the scope of work that is planned in the coming future, we can't accommodate, we don't have the personnel to be able to be in multiple places at the same time. So we need some additional help to get all the inspections done for these DOT required projects. That's pretty much all I can say on that. Do you have any questions? This is part of the engineering tech's job description is inspection. We don't currently have an engineering tech. I would love to fill that position because that takes a lot of work off of my shoulders. And hopefully after July, maybe we can, we can do that stuff. But Safe Roots to School Program, hopefully, we're, hopefully we're well into that by the time that we get somebody involved and brought up to speed and on inspection processes. It's not nearly as simple as it sounds, especially when the state's involved where you're just standing there looking at it. There's, it's a very particular, difficult system to know, and it's not bad when you've done it a few times, but it is quite thorough. So to bring somebody on board who has not done it before is not ideal. So what I was proposing, I had for this line, I was proposing for two, two people and to use as needed, as necessary to minimize it as much as possible. And if we do hire an engineering tech that is capable, then I don't need, and I don't need another person, and I won't use another person, but I need... But I need, I need a way to get this required action done with the current setup. So this is a worst-case scenario, if you will, but it's also required stipulation. And I don't know, I'm just staring at you, Bill.
All right, Charlie. Want you to jump in for the soft storage and monitoring parts?
I got some questions if I have to.
The soft storage?
No. I'm so good.